Meeting of the Medford School Committee will now come to order. The Secretary will call the roll.
Mr. President, I say, this is Brett Siew. This is the student here. Switch your own present. This is the school staff. How do you do? Present.
Present, seven present and unabsent. We also have in attendance Jasper Sue from Medford High School. All please rise and salute our flag. This just doesn't seem right. Sounds like everything is on. John, we're having a problem.
Testing.
So that is the Title I Grant and the descriptor just doesn't give a good indication, but the program is Title I funding. It is.
Sure. The vendor Melissa and Doug, I put together a short list. Magnetic hide-and-seek board, wooden block set, nesting and sorting barn animals, alphabet nesting and stacking blocks, lacing beads, a vehicle chunky puzzle, big button number fun, wooden bear family dress-up puzzle, match and roll shape sorter, stacking blocks. These are just wonderful, great educational toys. Thank you. November 6th, the purpose of our meeting was to discuss some homework received at the M A S E Retreat Session Number One. Our job was to develop some key functions that would fit well with our school committee. Each of you received a draft copy in your committee packets. This evening, we had another follow-up meeting at 6:30 PM in the executive session room number 207. And so currently, right now, we have made a motion to have a final draft ready for you at the next meeting on December 17th. So please disregard the draft that you have right now and we're going to get you an updated draft by the next meeting. Aye.
On Wednesday, I had the opportunity to participate, the Wednesday right before Thanksgiving, I had the opportunity to participate in my first Medford High School Mustang pep rally. That was truly a phenomenal event. Getting this...
She was amazing, amazing!
It was truly a phenomenal event, seeing the excitement of the team, the staff, the unified spirit of everyone, and really cheering on our Mustangs and a great performance by our band, our cheerleaders. And it was just a wonderful time of the school coming together and really celebrating. So that was a wonderful event, the pep rally, my first pep rally, and I definitely am looking forward to many more. We were accompanied by the mayor and many members of the school committee were able to come out as well in support of the pep rally, so that was an enjoyable event. I want to just recognize all of our Medford Mustang football players. I say that our players have heart. As you know, Thanksgiving Day was one of the coldest days on record, and so our Mustangs, they gave it their all. So we did have a tough loss, but it was very close. It was 28 to 24 with Malden. But I want to just say a great thanks, a special thanks to Coach Nasimento, all of his staff, all of the players, the family members that were there, Headmaster Deleva and Principal Fallon, they were also present, many directors. I was able to make it there with my son and really I saw Member Vanderklut there as well, braving the cold, and so we still were able to have a very enjoyable Thanksgiving. And so I want to just recognize our Medford Mustangs and say just for them, "Go Mustangs!" So I'm going to continue to support you. So last Monday, when we came back off of the Thanksgiving break, we had our second retreat with the school committee. And as a team, we had an opportunity with my leadership team as well, Associate Superintendent Caldwell and Assistant Superintendent Patterson. We were able to have rich discussions with Dorothy Presser from M A S E, who was our presenter, and my coach from NISSUP, Dr. Carla Bear as well, who participated. And we were beginning to kind of lay the foundation of what is to come, my goals, what will come by the end of the year, my district improvement goals, and so I look forward to those retreats, and I thank you all for participating in that with me. On Friday, that just happened this past weekend, there's always a lot happening in Medford, so I want to keep everyone informed. We had our official ribbon cutting for the new basketball court and the new scoreboard. The Leslie Lynx, the basketball team, and our Medford Mustang basketball players were there for the ceremony. It was a basketball game that was taking place. Mayor Burke was there, Member Kathy Crutz, Leslie University officials, Medford High coaches, my Associate Superintendent Diane Caldwell. We all participated in the official opening, celebrating the gymnasium and the new scoreboards. So that was a very happy occasion. On this past Saturday, we had a very successful Girls on the Run program that took place at Hormel Stadium. Girls on the Run, Greater Boston, is an independent nonprofit organization affiliated with Girls on the Run International, which has over 200 chapters across the United States. This program helps to build competence, confidence, connection, character, caring, and contribution through research-based lessons that incorporate running. So girls from the McGlin Elementary and the Roberts Elementary, both fielded teams, and I'd like to just thank Megan Richard for helping to spearhead this initiative along with the coaching staffs at both the McGlin and the Roberts Schools. Associate Superintendent Diane Caldwell and McGlin Elementary Assistant Principal Doreen Andrews were seen there cheering on the girls during that event. So that was a very positive event for our students and empowering for them. Also, last week, we had six Medford High School student athletes and two coaches attend the 25th Annual M I A A Sportsmanship Summit at Gillette Stadium. Over 500 student athletes and coaches from around the state attended breakout sessions throughout the day to learn about the importance of sportsmanship. On Thursday, this coming Thursday, just a reminder to everyone, December 6th at 7:30 in the Karen Theater, Mayor Burke along with members of the school committee will be able to honor former longtime school committee member Lena DeGente Maso. And so we're going to have the music room named after her, and so I want to thank school committee member Erin DiBenedetto and City Council Member Michael Marks for their dedication on this particular project, and I look forward to seeing you all on Thursday evening to enjoy that wonderful holiday show that will also follow the dedication. I want to say from a collaborative level between Medford Public Schools and the city, we are continuing to work collaboratively with the mayor and the Board of Health as we look at social-emotional learning initiatives, so that continues to be a top priority for us, and we've had very many fruitful meetings around that. I want to just let people know that our winter sports programming has officially started, and it's going to begin the second week of December, but get ready for that. So right now, we're in December, we are entering the season of giving, and Medford Public Schools will be hosting a lot of fundraising activities and events, and we hope that the community will be able to join us for those. The Mustang Band parents will be continuing to sell Christmas trees. They sold trees this weekend and next weekend on Saturday and Sunday, so if you are looking for trees, come support the band, and they will be selling on Saturday between 11 and 5 and Sunday between 10 and 4. Medford High School and the McGlin Elementary School, as well as the city of Medford, are collecting new unwrapped toys for the U.S. Marines Toys for Tots campaign. So again, please, while you're doing your holiday shopping, please remember those that are less fortunate and work collaboratively with the city. Our own Medford Family Network is also hosting their mitten trail in their classrooms, so take a moment to come by and grab a mitten to assist our families that are in need. We would greatly appreciate that. Our Medford Vocational Technical High School is once again working with our Rotary Club, the Medford Rotary Club, to put together food baskets for those in need. The donations of non-perishable food items is greatly appreciated to that cause. The Mustang Key Club is conducting a canned food drive for those in need as well. So we are, as a community, as a district, really thinking about helping those that need the help during this holiday time. So the Medford Community Coalition, in collaboration with our Medford Family Network, is hosting a toy drive at the Real Gusto on High Street this Wednesday, December 5th, at 6 o'clock, so if you're able, you are welcome to come support that cause. And our Medford Mustang Mall at the high school, which is run by our vocational students in the marketing program, they are having extended holiday shopping hours to the community, so please come by and support them between 7:15 and 4 o'clock. We're just encouraging, again, wearing our Mustang gear, it's wonderful holiday gifts. So those are a lot of things that are happening in the district over the past few weeks and what's going to be coming. I also want to just take a quick moment to recognize that we had our own Kathy Madaglio and our parent Melanie McLaughlin, who is part of our special ed, our CPAC team, that they were on NPR, and there was a story titled "Medford Schools Working to Improve Emergency Plans for Students with Disabilities." So it was recently aired on NPR, and they were interviewed by Carrie Young and Carla Andre. One of our special ed teachers was also involved in that. So Medford has a lot happening, and I continue to look forward to keeping you updated. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, and up next is the report on the superintendent's goals.
So in your packets, as an educator and an administrator, DESI, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, has an expectation that all educators have goals, and so I myself fall into that category. Shared with you are my improvement goals that I worked on collaboratively with the training that I've been receiving at NISSUP, the new superintendent's induction program, which is endorsed by DESI. And I have provided you with the four goals that I will be working on this year, which kind of overlap and address the work that I also talked to you about a little earlier with my entry plan. So under District Improvement Goals, Effective Entry and Direction Setting. And so by the late spring, the district will have a broad understanding from key stakeholder groups about the district's most critical needs and promising strategies that will address them most effectively. I talked about the key actions that were listed there, I won't go through all of them, but the key actions, next report will be coming from me in February in regards to status of the entry plan findings. Our next district improvement goal is going to be developing a district-wide focus on instruction. So working with principals and other district leaders, I will have working to develop a common language, a common vocabulary about instruction as a foundation for their future work to continue to see improved outcomes for our students. So working on developing consistent language between all of us who are looking at instruction and evaluating teachers, and I detail and explain the learning walks that I will be continuing to conduct, continuing to collaborate with Leslie University. And I have given myself the charge of trying to conduct at least five school and classroom visits at each school. I expect to exceed that, but that is my expectation, to be able to continue to be in schools looking at instruction. And by the end of this academic year, to have truly taken the time to have introduced the core actions to all leaders and teachers, and so that rollout has actually already started. So that's my second district improvement goal. Under Student Learning Goal, for elementary mathematics, that was my focus for this year, to improve elementary achievement outcomes in mathematics by deepening teacher and principal knowledge of mathematics. And so talking about the key actions, supporting the development and implementation of an effective elementary mathematics coaching program, which we have in place right now, and continued development with our partnership with Leslie University, and looking at benchmarking, we will be conducting our second formal walk in January, and ensuring that high-quality, targeted professional development in mathematics is available, and conduct school visits, again, focused on the five core actions which I have presented to you at an earlier time in mathematics. I list the benchmarks there as well. Again, under Benchmarks for Student Learning Goal, I have put in an ambitious goal of seeing an increase of our students' performance from meeting and exceeding expectations on the state assessment. We currently are at 40.6, hoping to move to 45%. I would like to see an approximate, that's an increase of approximately 10% of our third through fifth graders, so that is my goal, and I will do everything that I can to try to achieve that goal, but it is an ambitious goal to try to see a 10% improvement at that grade span. Last goal is my professional practice goal. As I've mentioned before, I am in a training session with the new superintendent induction program, which is to develop skills in strategy development, data analysis, and instructional leadership by completing the first year of the NISSUP program. And so I intend on participating in all eight day-long sessions, completing all assignments, which I have been doing to date, and consulting and meeting with my leadership coach on a monthly basis. And the benchmarks will be the documentation from the NISSUP program at its completion. So those are my goals that I present to the team.
Thank you, Dr. Edward. I was going to ask if on the key actions for district improvement, number three, rather than saying by June, if you could say by mid-May, propose key strategies, because I think it's essential that we have some time to hear the strategies and understand what the budget impact might be.
I'll make that adjustment.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. I was really heartened by your...
I was really heartened by your section about mathematics. Perhaps it's close to my heart, as you know. I would really be interested, if possible, when you do have meetings with Leslie University about scheduling the tutor program. I'd be interested if I could sit in on those meetings or at least be forwarded on that process. I'm very excited about the partnership moving forward. And I think there's a great potential. I'll be curious to see what they have to think. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. In your benchmark around the MCAS math increase from 40.6 to 45%, was there some kind of rubric that you used to pick that number?
Yes. So I did work in collaboration with my coach, Dr. Beer, and we discussed the focus, not only as a district, did we make an investment in having two full-time coaches assigned to the elementary schools. So that's a 2.0 FTE. And I feel for that kind of investment, to have each school receiving coaching, two days a week, two full days a week, coaching support, that you expect to see an outcome from that investment. And so principals, when they are going to look at instruction, they are looking at mathematics instruction. There is extra scrutiny, I feel, that's being given to math. Additional support with the planning of mathematics and professional development opportunities that teachers have been afforded, that I feel, you know, it is an ambitious goal. I don't know what our outcomes will be, but I would like to just push the bar and say, let's go for a 10% increase. That is significant. But I expect to see improved outcomes. That's my expectation for the investment that we're making and the support that's being given.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this. It's very nice to have in writing someone's goals and where their focus is going to be. I think it's very helpful for the whole, the community as a whole. They get to hear your voice and what you think the priorities are for your first year. And I just wanted to expand a little bit. You talk a lot about mathematics, and the reason for that is because when you joined us, you saw that that was the greatest need for our district to focus on for this year. And I just wanted it to be out there that that's why that was chosen. It wasn't arbitrary. It was based on data and MCAS scores, and that was your assessment at the beginning. And as an instructional leader in your previous job, we felt that we would, you know, focus on that as a committee with you. And so just so the community knows, that's why mathematics is highlighted in your goals so directly. And in future years, those goals will change as the district needs change. Again, thank you for your report. It's really good to have this, especially when it comes time for us as a committee to do your review. We can look back at what your goals were and how you've probably overshot most of them. That's my prediction. I do have a question about some of the happenings that you had in Medford, but I'll wave to my colleagues if anybody else had a question.
I have a question on superintendent's goals.
Going back.
I have a wordsmithing suggestion.
Yes.
And I redid it a couple times, so it got shorter and shorter. But for developing a district-wide focus on instruction, if I could suggest, you might phrase it this way. By working with principals and other district leaders, we will develop a common language about instruction, which will be used as the foundation for improving instruction. I think that a word or two was left out inadvertently.
Thank you for that.
Oh, our student.
Get this in with you guys. This focus on math is really great. And I know as a part of the National Honor Society, we're trying to focus on getting our tutoring sessions from just high school as well as some middle schoolers. There's a little bit of complication because we can't leave the high school as a part of the National Honor Society. But if there was any way we can get the opportunity to get elementary school kids from third and fifth grade up to the high school, I'm sure that a lot of our students would be willing to help. And I'd just love to, on behalf of the National Honor Society, to extend that opportunity to them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate very much that consideration. And, you know, we can think very creatively about ways to work with our high school students in supporting our elementary students in their mathematics work. So I appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much. Just a couple questions. I know that the Medford High School Mall extended their hours till 4:15. I remember before we had the retail shop through the vocational school, that as a PTO parent, I used to open the shop like one or two nights prior to the holidays. And so parents could come after work, like 6:00 or 7:00 at night, and buy MASC swag for their family members as Christmas gifts. I don't know if we have time or ability to do that. I think even myself would love to get some new gear, but 4:00 is kind of early in the day to get across many towns from work to there. So I don't know if you could look into, even if it's just one night, and have it staffed really well. I know that I need a lot of stuff. Also, do they take credit card? Or is it cash only? Or how they pay for that would be helpful as well. They take credit card now? Okay.
And I will look into seeing if we can get extended hours, and we'll get it up on the...
Website.
Yeah, blogspot and the website, so that...
And maybe the patch or the local paper, if we put it out there, we can generate...
They were here last Monday evening during our holiday. So they were in the front lobby and the second lobby. No traction.
And my second one is the Key Club. I know that you mentioned that they're doing a canned food drive, but years ago, they used to do caroling throughout the city. So I don't know if that's something that they still do. I know you could make a donation or a cost. I don't know if you know. And they used to hire them. Say you were having a holiday potty in your house, they would come and carol at your house. So I was just wondering if that was still something that they were doing. It was a lot of fun. When you had a big family gathering, and you'd have all of Medford High's Key Club coming in and singing, and you'd give them hot chocolate and cookies. I don't know if anybody...
Could I ask, Tony, are you able to speak to that? Tony Zigni?
[inaudible]
Okay. But I can follow up to find out and see if we can get that advertised as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's goals?
So motion.
2019, that's the community. Miss... Hopped by Ms. Dale.
Second.
Excited by Mr. Russo. All in favor? All in favor? If the motion passes. Thank you. Report on MASC conference, Ms. Vaynerko.
So just a quick update. As you know, the MASC hosted the annual Joint School Committee Superintendent Conference from November 7th to 10th in Hyannis, Massachusetts, representing Medford, myself, member Paul Rousseau, and our associate superintendent Diane Caldwell. Throughout the conference, we attended numerous presentations and events, including the update from the Department of Education, a presentation involving all stakeholders, school law and legal updates, a presentation on the new Superintendent Induction Program, and many others. I myself was particularly pleased to have the opportunity to hear the new Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, speak. He felt like a breath of fresh air, and it sounds to me like he will be more concerned with the whole child and will take a more measured approach to standardized testing. It was the first opportunity that I had to hear the Commissioner. And I'm hoping that we might set up to invite him to Medford to see some of our wonderful programs, completely, like I thought about the CCSR or some of our early child programs. I'd like to get the Commissioner here. And it was really wonderful to hear him. He truly was a breath of fresh air. Another highlight of the conference was the Thursday morning keynote speaker, Mark Brackett, PhD, a founding director of the Yale Center for Emotional Intelligence and professor in the Child Study Center at Yale University. Dr. Brackett explained his Ruler Approach, an acronym for the five key emotion skills of recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating emotions. And I referred to him at our last meeting, when we were talking about social emotional learning issues. He is going to have some work that we might want to participate in. He was very, very inspirational. And so truly a highlight of the conference. Lastly, I myself facilitated the Division Two meeting, which is our geographic region for MASC. We re-elected Stacy Rizzo from Revere to lead the division. She's a wonderful, active school committee member in Revere. And finally, I think that the MASC conference is always a way to connect with fellow school committee members from across the Commonwealth and gain an understanding that what we are dealing with here in Medford and issues that are important to us are also important to our fellow school committee members. It provides an opportunity to get a much broader view than just simply, you know, in our local community.
Did you want to... All in favor?
No, no, just it's for us.
Recognition, Christopher Walsh and Arden Ingersoll.
I would like our Director of Fine Arts, Mr. Tony Zigni, to please come forward.
Good to be here. Very pleased that we've had two Medford High School students selected to perform in this year's prestigious Massachusetts Music Educators Association Northeast District Senior Festival Concert. And they were among more than 1,000 students from across northeastern Massachusetts who auditioned for the event on Saturday, November 17th, at North Andover High School, with only 40% of those who auditioned selected to participate. This is the second year in a row, both of them have been selected to the senior festival. And they'll rehearse and perform under guest conductors at the festival concert, and that'll be held at the Galvin Middle School in Wakefield on January 12th, 2019. And selected to the festival were senior Christopher Walsh on mallet percussion, who was accepted to the festival percussion ensemble, and senior Arden Ingersoll, accepted to the festival orchestra on string bass with all-state recommendation.
We'd like to invite Mr. Walsh and Mr. Ingersoll up to receive commendations. The Medford Public Schools is proud to recognize Arden Ingersoll for being accepted to the festival orchestra. And the Medford Public Schools is proud to recognize Christopher Walsh for being accepted to the festival percussion ensemble. Nice job. For anyone that's seen the band play at Hormel Stadium predominantly, they're just fabulous. And they did an amazing job, as the superintendent just mentioned, at the pep rally just a couple of weeks ago. So wonderful, such a great part of our community. Congratulations, you two. And with that being said, we have a grand announcement for the Medford High School Band. I don't know if Ms. Rello would like to come up and be the proud reporter of this information? Ms. Rello.
So the Medford Mustang Marching Band has been invited to participate in December of 2020, so two years from this week, to participate in the 75th anniversary of the end of World War II. The peace treaty was signed in Pearl Harbor. And they are inviting one marching band from every state to participate in a History Channel and A&E Network-sponsored event, where they're going to have a lot of events and things for the bands to participate in. They're going to have documentaries, and they're going to unveil new museum exhibits for the students. So we have been chosen on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to represent Massachusetts. So we are very excited. So not only are we representing Medford, but we're also representing Massachusetts. It's a really big deal, because we are very far from Hawaii, and it's kind of an honor to go. The only other band in our area from Massachusetts that's ever made it out to Hawaii for a trip is Danvers High School, and 2000, I believe, does one. So we don't get out there very often, but it's nice to get out there and represent Massachusetts. We will be doing a whole bunch of events and community service. We will be performing in the Pearl Harbor Day Parade. As part of the ceremony, we'll also be performing on the deck of the USS Missouri, which is still stationed in the water, which is nice. And we'll be able to do a wreath ceremony at that performance, where we can honor the 224 residents of Medford that passed away and lost their life in World War II. So we'll be able to do a wreath ceremony on that, be able to honor the city of Medford. We'll be able to perform there. We'll be able to perform at the International Marketplace for a whole bunch of different organizations, and we'll also be able to perform in the parade. So there's a bunch of performance opportunities, as well as educational documentaries and presentations. So we're really looking forward to it. Who has questions? Who wants to go?
Thanks so much for representing not only Medford, but Massachusetts on that day. What a phenomenal opportunity.
Yeah, it's a very special event. So the timing is kind of crazy, but we're really excited about having some time, hopefully in the next few years, to kind of fundraise and get ready for it.
Excellent. Congrats. Mr. Benedetto.
Thank you. First of all, I want to congratulate you and everybody that made it possible, the parents, the band members.
They worked hard.
But you've really grown this program since the day you started. You hit the ground running, and you've done a tremendous job. I wanted to congratulate you personally on that. I also...
Thank you.
I also read through your packet, and I'm ready to approve this. There's only one issue that I saw with it, and I spoke to you directly about it, is a few years ago, the school committee made it mandatory that all students take out the insurance when they're traveling. So if you make that change in this, I motion to approve it and volunteer to go if an extra person is needed. So remember, I was first. And...
Included, Erin, is because I was trying to keep costs down as low as possible, so we're trying to go bare bones here. But that's something that needs to be included. It absolutely can be included. There's already a policy in place. I just have to call the company and have them tack it on to our package.
And Haley, it's just been so thrilling to watch the band get better and better with every performance. The pep rally was just great. The performances were just terrific. And I really need to congratulate you and every member, because those kids, they're working hard, and they're having a great deal of fun, and you can see it on their faces. So thank you so much.
So I, who doesn't love Hawaii, in December especially? But my question is, the dates, the 4th through the 9th, if a family went, do the kids have to come home with the rest of the group? Or can we make it...
They, we have different policies on that. With our Disney trip we did in April, what happens is you can sign your student over. So with the travel agent that we worked with for the Florida trip, we had a few parents, because it was vacation, they wanted to stay a little bit longer. So you actually sign your student out of my care and into your care, and we do like a pass off, and transition them to their parents. And from that point on in the trip, even if we were still there, they were their parents' responsibility. They stayed with their parents and longer stayed with the group. So there is an option to do that, of course.
Yes, I wanted to say congratulations to the entire band and you, and it's just incredible. It's truly an honor, and like Erin said and Paul said, and I would like to go too, and there's like a long list of people that want to go.
I have been told that anyone that comes with us can be part of the ceremony on the USS Missouri. So if anybody would like to come and like to be part of that, just let me know. We have a friends and family package, so.
It's going to be a giant group.
Thank you.
Proud mama who owes $20,000 in two years. Ms. Rello.
Yes.
So will middle schoolers be, so right in two years I'll have a sophomore, freshman, and seventh grader, will middle schoolers be open to the trip, or will you keep it to strictly?
No, because Florida, we also brought seventh grade, we also opened up the vocational school, so we're not really like the Medford High School band. We call ourselves the Medford Mustang Marching Band, because there's lots of students involved. As long as they're over a certain age, they're allowed to attend. So seventh grade and up usually is fine.
Okay.
Because the parents have to sign off on everything, so as long as they understand the rules, they're placed in rooms with children of their own age and everything.
Okay, and then just in regards to looking two years out, so will you somehow try to reach out to current fifth and sixth graders?
We're hoping in December to have a parent meeting to look at the current seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th graders that we have. And then as our fifth and sixth grade move into seventh and eighth grade, over the next year or two, we can add them into the process.
Okay.
So I believe, because that's one of the questions, first questions I asked the travel agency, because most of the band that will be going is not currently in band right now, so it's kind of hard to plan for that. So we have up to a year and a half to change our numbers. So what we can do is we'll plan, but as long as we have over 40, or 40 is a minimum to start, we can go on the package that they proposed to us. Anything over that, we'll lower the price. So I'm hoping to get some more students involved, and we can add them up to a year and a half.
Okay.
In the next year and a half, we can add them in.
Okay, thank you.
So this update is just a follow-up to the original October 1 report, and based on all of the additional research and information from our new data analyst, Kim Miles. This is the finalized count, and she has separated the information for some interesting demographics for your information purpose only. But again, just a reminder that these are the student counts that are used for Chapter 70 funding going into the FY '20 school year. It's always a year in arrears in terms of the enrollment and funding the budget. So this is the updated document, and we have successfully filed all of our state reports for the student information, the EPUMs, and the SES mandated reports through DESI. So we are in good shape as far as that goes.
Thank you. So you mentioned this, I think, so this report that says there were 77 kindergartners at the Brooks, DESI's website will not show that for another year.
Correct.
Okay.
So current data is based on last year's enrollment counts, October 1.
But this October 1 date is the date DESI uses.
Correct.
You know, if enrollment goes way up or down, this is the snapshot that will show up on DESI's website.
That's correct. If we have more students enroll throughout the year, that they're not counted towards our funding. So it's always important that we have every child counted for prior to that October 1 snapshot, because that determines our funding.
Thank you.
Thank you. I only have a couple of questions. At the Roberts, fourth and fifth grade, there's a significant increase in the amount of students, and I realize that part of that is because first-year ELL students are sent to the Brooks, and then they have the right to come back to the Roberts. Is that correct? Is that how it's working, Diane?
They do have the right to go back, but that's really not why. We had a bubble that year. We had a great number of kindergartners and first graders, and so the bubble is in grades four and five right now. So next year, we'll just have five grade fives, because we have five grade fours and five grade fives this year.
So those numbers won't be as high for fourth grade next year, just fifth grade will continue to be higher and no move out?
Yes, they'll be followed in the middle schools.
Okay. I was just curious if that was the case or not. That was my first question. And then my other question is, thank you for breaking it down by subgroups. That's really good for us to see.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a snapshot of the district and what we're looking at. There's just one thing I was hoping that we could also know, is like how many homeless families and students we have in the district. I don't know if you have that count. It's just, especially this time of year, I'm very aware of it. I take care of the homeless families for another district, so I'm well-aware that a lot more people recently in the district I work at have become homeless, and I was just wondering where we are in Medford, and how many families, and where they're sheltering them, if we knew that information. And it doesn't have to be tonight. I was just curious, just to have a snapshot of our district and the needs of the people in our community. So if we could get that at a later date, that would be great.
Just as a follow-up, we can only provide information on our students, not the families. So it's based on, you know, a count for students.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, thank you for this report. I also really enjoyed the breakdowns. I was really curious, though, when I originally read this, about the ratio of special education students and pre-K. Do we, it seemed like that's a pretty big chunk of the population, or is that a normal, once again, the male-to-female ratio seemed a little different, or am I reading the report wrong? Or are these usual sort of...
Again, this is, I don't know in terms of actual special education numbers and figures and percentages. This is just our data, our demographics.
Regarding our pre-K programs, the majority of the programs are in place because they develop as a special education program, and then community children are invited to come in on a tuition basis.
I see.
So we maintain a 50% ratio, so we always need 50% or fewer, 50% or more of typically developing children in the classroom for it to be an integrated pre-K classroom. So all except for the McGlynn, the McGlynn pre-K, come under special education.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
So that's why they're so close in numbers.
Is that mandated by the state, or is that be a funding issue, or is that just our policy in general?
So we develop pre-K programs based on our student numbers, special education student numbers, and the need to increase or opening up new classrooms. And each time we open a new classroom, that opens up new community seats.
I see.
And currently, there are still, if anyone is looking for a community seat, we still have some openings. So if anyone in the community is interested in having their child attend a pre-K classroom here in Medford, we have part-day programs, full-day programs, a couple days a week programs. There's a variety or a range of options available.
Great.
We will take a three-year-old who is independent enough to manage in a pre-K classroom.
Great, thank you so much.
Mayor Burke, just as a follow-up, both my children were members of those classrooms many years ago, because they're 27, 25 now, and both learned an exceptional amount. They still remember a lot of the things that they did on a daily basis in that program, and it really enhanced, they were the model students, they were the typical developing students, they called them model students back then.
I just wanted to mention that back in 1990, my child was a student in a MEEP classroom as a model student.
Yeah.
So that's how long we've had our program here in Medford.
And it's a tremendous program, so anybody listening that has a child, that they're, it's a great opportunity. The tuition is not expensive, or it wasn't. It's a really, really wonderful way for your child to develop and grow within the district, and it helps them prepare for school, and a lot of fun, a lot, a lot of fun. I think that some of those teachers are still there.
Yes, thank you. So this is, again, just the summary for the closeout of the prior fiscal year, indicating that we had $56,431,000 that was identified as the appropriation budget, and an additional $2,71,107 earmarked from outside revenue sources that equaled a total budget of $58,502,007. So that gave us the spending capacity, according to our budget, of the $58,502,007. We did need to offset revenues by the amount of $1,927,223, which gave us $143,884 of that offset that we did not have to utilize going towards our total budget, if you will, to cover items within the general fund. So the balance of any of the revenues was used to clear deficits within the revolving funds, such as athletics. And this is a program that is known to be in a deficit. We don't have enough collections of, or the fee structure is limited, and so our athletic programs are very popular. However, we don't have an excessive amount charged in order to subsidize these programs. So we just have to know as a district that this area is routinely needing to be covered, and that has to be covered by the general fund revenue in order for us to close out. The areas that were identified through savings, just some examples, was within the ELL department, and those were paid within the school program codes, and that's reporting distinctions for end-of-year report. Again, my reporting is based on the function codes, program areas, by school and by department, so we have to break those out accordingly. Special education transportation within the general fund, that came in lower than the original encumbrances that we had thought, so as we were able to liquidate at the end of the year, we did have some savings. Vocational, out-of-district tuitions, again, we had fewer students attending the Minuteman and Essex programs, so the applicable transportation was also lower than expected. Buildings and grounds, we had the utility usage for heating, natural gas, and phone service, had favorable contract rates, and therefore, lower utilization. We did have some savings in those program areas that were able to balance the overall budget in its entirety. So at the end of the, as we closed out the fiscal year and reconciled, we have the amounts that were identified and the closeout that we offset from revenue, where this is within the after-school programs, the before-school programs, the MEEP, the Shore and Special Ed tuitions, circuit breaker amounts, transportation reimbursements from the homeless, as well as vocational tuitions, TRITech funding, which is going away, and any of the building facility rentals that we were able to utilize for those purposes. I've also included a summary report of the revolving fund balances at the end, so that you have the information in terms of where those programs landed as well.
Thank you for the report, and thank you for adding the revolving amount, because I probably wouldn't ask for it. So I had a question to start off with. Is the beginning balances for all of those programs, the MEEP program and the after-school, before-school, they all started with a negative balance?
Correct. So this is financial accounting. I don't like to manipulate the report, so I added some little notations at the top to let you know that these were, a particular column is an expenditure, a revenue, and if it had a negative amount or parentheses, that's a positive ending balance. So the amounts coming in were positive balances, minus the expenditures, adding in the revenues, and then any offsetting amounts that we charged back gave us the positive ending balances that you see there for the FY '18 column.
Okay. In future, could you give us the balance on that amount, like the total on that column?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. It's just so we can just see it nice and easy, and it's right there. Yeah, please, thank you.
Sure.
And then we can just look at big picture, and then it's a little easier. So the only question I had is, another question I had actually, is page three of nine, and then it was like under elementary schools, the last four items. Did those schools not use all of their textbooks allocated, fee, allocated amounts?
That's correct. So whatever was expensed is what was utilized, and any balances were what was remaining from the allocation provided.
I just wanted, I just saw two things last year, is that towards the end of the school year, some principals, when they came forward, hadn't put in purchase requests for things soon enough. So I just want to make sure that we work with them this year to make sure that they're aware to start pre-ordering in time before the accounting department needs to close out their books.
Absolutely. And we did provide training for all of the principals and their support staff, so they do have access to their segment of the budget. So again, the intent is that for these items, especially textbooks, that those are purchased early in the year. Typically, you wouldn't need that in April or May, the year's almost over at that point. So we are encouraging all of the principals to monitor and review their requirements and to put in those purchases as they're needed upfront.
Okay, and my last thing is the athletics department. And I understand the need, and by no means do we want to change anything. We have great programming, we offer a wide range, a variety of things that all our students have taken advantage of. But I thought when we did the budget, we raised their budget, pre-budgeted amount, so that way it would reflect on what the need was, so we weren't going to be at the end of the year doing this again.
We increased for...
I just wanted, I just saw two things last year, is that towards the end of the school year, some principals, when they came forward, hadn't put in purchase requests for things soon enough. So I just want to make sure that we work with them this year to make sure that they're aware to start pre-ordering in time before the accounting department needs to close out their books.
Absolutely. And we did provide training for all of the principals and their support staff, so they do have access to their segment of the budget. So again, the, the intent is that for these items, especially textbooks, that those are purchased early in the year. Typically, you wouldn't need that in April or May, the year's most, almost over at that point. So we are encouraging all of the principals to monitor and review their requirements and to put in those purchases as, as they're needed upfront.
Okay. And my last thing is the athletics department. And I understand the need and by no means do we want to change anything. We have great programming, we offer a wide range, a variety of things that all our students have, have taken advantage of. But I, I thought when we did the budget, we raised their budget, pre-budgeted amount so that way it would reflect on what the need was, so we weren't going to be, um, at the end of the year doing this again.
We increased for FY19.
Okay.
So 18 is still, and again, we didn't increase to where the ultimate need is. We, we're incrementally increasing, we're still offsetting with the revolving account where we can, but the usage and it, when the teams are successful, there's additional transportation, there's additional officials fees. So on a given year, it's, even though we, we try to project and, and budget accordingly, the successful teams will, will drive those figures up even further. So, but that's a good thing.
Can't, can't win for winning, right? Oh, no. Okay, that's great. I just want to keep moving forward for that because it, it makes it look like we're not funding it well and I would rather be proactive than reactive with that because I don't want to cut anything and I don't want people to think, oh, you know, it's over budget all the time. We need, we need to budget it well. Thank you. I appreciate the answers.
Thank you for the report. You specifically mentioned the revolving counts of athletics and so that made me look in here for the athletics. But on the summary, school athletics had a starting balance of negative $21, so I'm confused.
So it came in with a positive $21.
Okay.
All of our receipts and the expenditures that we charged off, in fact, this program was in a deficit, I had to cover it. So we have a positive three cents. I can't, I can't go a negative in a revolving account. So it had just enough to reflect a positive account, but this category in particular runs in a deficit.
So maybe, is there a column missing that tells us how much we are taking from the pile of money?
Well, the, the summary is what, what was provided. So in terms of making them whole, that's what the offsetting entries do, is to coordinate and make sure that each of the programs aren't in a deficit and we have the offsets from expenditures through, in, in the revenue piece.
But it says $21.
Correct. So going from last year, again, covering a deficit, they, we covered up to $21 and they rolled in, that was the amount. So each year, they essentially start from zero.
Right.
They take in revenues that are not enough to cover what we need to expend for the purpose of athletics.
Could I just add something?
Please.
Along with the revolving account that collects the student user fees, the budget also has an expense line for athletics, above and beyond what's covered through that.
So, so the, so the, the debits for athletics, 489, 453, they'll just say half a million dollars. That's the money spent. But the credit of 489, 432, how much of that is from?
User fees?
User fees.
Plus user fees.
Or, so none of that came out of this 1.9 million dollars?
No, we have an additional deficit in athletics of 27,000 within the operating budget. So in total, our athletics would probably be about 35,000 plus, closer to 40,000 in a deficit across revenue, the revolving and the appropriation side for that area.
Okay. But is there any report that shows us that? Because, you know, I'm looking at school lunch, for instance, which, I mean, $188,000 in balance, which is fabulous and, I mean, that's nice, but this report doesn't help me understand. We have all this money that we, that you found, or we had savings and then it's being used to cover all these things, but I can't tell from this report who's getting the money, who's getting coverage?
It's the operating budget. So the appropriation was about $2 million short of what we needed in order to function the district the way that, the service level that we want for all of the programs that we have. We have to utilize, these revolving programs is the revenue offset that we are able to achieve that. So we have to utilize the revenues and things that come in against these different programs across to the general fund in order to stay within the parameters of what our appropriation is and what we delivered in terms of what we could offset from our revenue sources.
I'll try to get to my actual question then.
Okay.
You know, I'm trying to understand, are we spending, you know, $200 per student for athletics, $30 per students for the band?
Okay.
$2 per student who wants to do an academic club? And that's important information because, well, some people think those other things are as important as athletics and, you know, when we have the band endlessly fundraising, um, you know, the different activities cost different amounts, so it isn't just that. But it would be nice to know that, is our budget and our commitment to per pupil activity rational? But we can't, I can't seem to figure out how to get that information.
Well, you have many programs and many items within a revolving fund. So in order to, to capture that, we're looking at every program that's ever run during the course of the year. So each program may have a different cost value. So each program may, one program may lose in the sense of they didn't collect enough revenue, another program may do better. And that's how they're able to offset in terms of the program area for their purpose and intent of each of the categories.
Even within athletics?
Correct.
Football may be more per student than gymnastics, for example.
Correct.
So even within a certain category, there's disparate information.
Right. But if, but if the gymnastics team has to fundraise, like it's their only job and the hockey team or the football team doesn't have to do anything because we just write a really big check, that's not fair. And I just want to get a sense or find some way to say, you know, this is how much it costs to be a soccer player, this is how much fundraising they, each person has to do, and, you know, I know the whole families and all that other stuff, and this is how much Medford in our budget from our taxes is giving each student to be a soccer player so that we can identify what is surely some big inequities here based on, you know, which sports are popular, which clubs are popular. Because I've seen some of the fundraising going on and I'm just like, do these kids get to go to school at all? It's like, all they're doing is fundraising and...
So I can say that there are outside donations for different athletic programs. So there is fundraising going on that's outside of our coffers. So I don't want to make the illusion that we're the only source funding all of these different programs. And again, it, there will not be a consistent cost factor per student, per event. It's not going to be the same a band member as a soccer player. Those are going to be totally different dollar values and even within that own program, it's going to be different. If you're looking at the band as an example, different instruments have different requirements of cleaning, maintaining and operating those, those areas. So in terms of providing a student per cost, per pupil, um, item, and you've also got the overhead within it. So there, there's a lot of cost factors for each program that the revolving funds carry. So even though the, the cost or the charge that we're implementing is a very low cost, there's still the overhead in terms of running that program, for staffing, for building usage, for the materials required to run that program. So there, there's a lot of that type of information that's not going to look consistent, it's not going to look, um, they're not apples to apples and, and they never will be in, in truest form, because that would be a false statement to say that, well, every athletic function should be the same per pupil cost, they're just not, just like the user fees change based on what their actual, um, item is. So they run.
I'm certainly not suggesting that you should have a single consistent user, that we shouldn't be budgeting a, you know, some number of dollars per student for activities, is not where I'm going at all. But it's not possible, it seems, to get a sense of, are we being fair, rational or deliberate in the current model? Because people are getting funds from all over the place, um, and, but that, that makes it complicated. But one place they are getting it is in this part of the budget. And, you know, I, I can't affect how well the, the band raises money in the community, but we certainly should have some sense of, you know, you said that every, every year the athletics is running a pretty big deficit.
Mm-hmm.
And is anybody else running a big deficit that's on this list every year? And, you know, is, is athletics have a thousand students and that deficit is rational for a thousand students versus another group which has eight students? If there was, if there was a group that had eight students and they had a $30,000 deficit we covered every year, and then we had another one with a thousand students and a $30,000 deficit, something's wrong there.
We can get a participation level for you for last year to tie out to the, these...
But some of these also should be showing up in our PTO process we, we laid down this past year. The band PTO should be doing a report.
Right.
All the friends of, you know, and that would tell us, number of participants, how much did you raise, what did you do with your money?
But again, that's outside the school coffers, so that's, that's not, they're 501(c)(3) entities.
Right.
So they're not going to show up on our documents for financials at all.
But we can have them together.
No, we wouldn't, because this is, well, you can, yes.
I can have them together, right?
Isn't that the committee that you were on, that they had to file and?
Yeah.
So we will have, we will see that.
Right.
Once that goes, it was supposed to go into effect in our report.
Once they effectively provide those reports, you can see what the donations are going out from those particular entities.
I'll say it.
I'm all set.
Mr. Giro.
Yeah, I would also like to know participation rates in the different activities, just so obviously, you know, if we have one chess kid and that cost, kid costs a million dollars, like a crazy example, but it would tell me a lot more about the program and participation levels. But I do have other questions. Um, I was curious about, on page six of nine, about the math teacher allocation. In particular, I was interested in the Andrews Middle School and I noticed here that, um, the budget there, that we've exceeded the budget significantly, I just want to know what the situation was there.
So again, this would be the actual charges for staffing that occurred, so there might have been some additional steps and lanes that that math department was able to achieve during the course of the year. There could have been a change in staffing where somebody came in at a higher rate than what was originally projected within the budget. So there's a number of factors that could impact that.
It just seems like, once again, talking about parity at our middle schools, when you have, this is page six of nine, um, when you have, uh, one school getting almost $120,000 more for math teachers, that's...
So again, it's, it's about replacement.
Apples to apples and I understand.
Also think the numbers are higher at the Andrews, so there could be an extra classroom that was needed.
And it's the level of the seniority for teaching as well, so there's a number of factors. I don't think that there was, there's an intentional piece here.
Yeah, of course.
It's based on who's already in the building.
Right. It would just be nice to understand what's
Right.
happening there. And this question is, I, I understand, recognize you're very, very busy and you have lots going on, especially at this time of year. But I wanted to know, do we have a sense of different school districts? Is that a, is that a, a report that would be easily found by you? Obviously, I don't know, asking you to, to cook it up yourself, but is there some sort of like database of different school systems that have breakdowns as fine?
Absolutely. The Department of Ed has the information and, and you're able to view that.
And for the closeouts and everything?
Mm-hmm.
It would be really interesting, I mean, I guess it's a question of, I'll do the research myself then, but, um, this report itself, when you created it, is this, was this one program that generated all these numbers?
This of, the financial system.
The financial system.
The city's financial system.
Is it possible that you could, you could create or email us the report when you create this as a machine readable format? So it'd be a little easier for me if I do the district-by-district analysis, I'm not going to have to enter.
The, the state provides that scenario for you and you can identify which districts you wanted to compare. The FY18 data will not be available until next year. Again, it's a year in arrears because of the reporting and filing that has to take place. So you'd be looking at the FY17 data on the Department of Ed's information that you could compare to other districts in terms of size, locality.
Is it a, is it a giant burden for you to send us this report as a machine readable PDF? Is that an easy thing, which is Ctrl+P and it's sent out?
I don't think the formulas are in there to add up by category. If you were to download it, because I've done it, the numbers you can play...
I've seen it, just line in, line in, line in.
It doesn't have a total button that's like formula. So you'd have to re-read in a formula.
Is it possible that?
But I can certainly scan it and send you as a PDF.
Right, but then I'll, I'll have to code something.
It's not going to be the function of...
Right. Oh, I can figure it out, it's a little Python play down.
There are motion to accept this report and place it on file by Ms. Crutt, seconded by Ms. Vanderklut. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Report on PTO registration informational.
So this is dovetailed perfectly into this next topic where we have identified that the new executive assistant in the superintendent's office will maintain the listing from our PTO organizations, our 501(c)(3) entities. I did a quick search from the Attorney General's website and there were 43 that came, came across with the word Medford in it. But again, that's not necessarily all school-based, it's, it could be city items as well. So there's a number of ways to search to, to identify if there's Brooks, Friends of the Brooks, or, you know, the individual schools. So there's a number of entities out there that are already functioning as a tax-exempt 501(c)(3). So we will be maintaining that listing through the superintendent's office going forward on an annual basis. I've also been in communication with the Attorney General's office and they are providing a canned webinar-based training segment that they would like to be rolling out to the Commonwealth. So we've kind of worked in collaboration, it was a timely partnership and they are going to be hopefully sending this out mid-January. So once I have additional information on that exact timeline, we will be one of the first to receive that training and identify that as, as citywide as well, not just necessarily school PTOs and 501(c)(3)'s, but we can impact anybody within the city that's part of these organizations to get better information on the governance of the 501(c)(3)'s, the processes, either to start them up and/or to keep them going in terms of the reporting requirements on an annual basis and the financial reports that are going. As people have communicated or requested information, again, the best resource is the Attorney General's website and that is the nonprofit organization. And if you Google the 501(c)(3) in Massachusetts, it takes you right to their website and that's a good starting point for initiating that if, if, if an organization was looking to formalize their fundraising efforts and be able to really help out and assist on particular programs. So that's the status that we have and in January, I hope to be able to share when we will be rolling out that additional training.
Very good. Mr. Bandito, a question on this?
Thank you. So there was a subcommittee on, on this last year, my colleagues were on, and we had a presentation by Jenny Graham. She presented this online program that all our PTOs and Friends of groups were supposed to start utilizing by October 1st and with the transition of the new superintendent and administrative team, that deadline hasn't happened. So we already have the form and it's been approved by this committee. I would like to move forward with the date for all our current program, um, PTOs and Friends of account to start using those. And I would like to see everybody registered by February 1st. I think that's a significant amount of time. I know with the holidays, it gives them the whole month of January after that to, to look at it. And they'll be looking at doing their taxes for their 501(c)(3), so they'll have the documents right in front of them. So I'm making a motion at this point to continue what we voted on for October 1st with, to continue that and have all of our groups be on, on that... continue that and have all of our groups, um, be on, on that line and facilitated by Emily by Oc-, by February 1st of 2019.
On the motion, that all PTOs and Friends of go online, Ms. Vanderklut.
Though, um, is what we developed consistent with? Does it make sense to have that happen before we see what the state has in there? I just want to make sure it works.
So again, we have to rely on the entities to self-report as well. Because if, if they've got a creative name that we haven't thought of to search within the AG's, um, search capacity, we're not going to find them. So that's more asking the public and the groups that are already affiliated to self-report to the superintendent's office so we can have an active and more accessible listing of those groups. So we can certainly put the, the start out there and provide what we are able to ascertain from the AG's website. But again, that's, it's really, um, self-reporting.
But there's no reason not to go ahead, as my colleague suggests, with the form that we developed?
No, it's, it's a simple document to identify the name and, and their 501(c)(3) tax ID information.
Okay.
Actually, actually, it was a little bit more than that. The, um, they, they had certain requirements. Maybe we should provide, um, maybe, um, we could ask Jenny Graham to come and present the form to us to refresh us of what's on there, so that way we all see it again, because it was almost a year ago, or, or at least to the subcommittee. Do you, do you have it?
Right.
And... Transfer it over so that it's under a district person.
Right. And we did make it mandatory at our meeting last year that all groups affiliated with using Friends of or PTOs, anything reflecting, it was mandatory, it wasn't voluntary for those groups to submit their information, otherwise they weren't allowed to raise funds using for Medford High Groups. So it's not a voluntary thing. I just wanted to be very clear that any group raising funds for students, uh, student activities that through Medford have mandated to, to register. I, I just wanted to be very clear on that. So...
On the motion by Mr. Benedetto, seconded by Ms. Vanderklut, that registration occurred no later than February 1st of 2019. On the motion, roll call vote?
Please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. Motion passes. Uh, zero motion on the floor for suspension of the rules to move negotiation in legal matters to the end of our agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Vanderklut, seconded by Mr. Russo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is granted. Under new business, be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences to the family of Mary Ann Cremins. Ms. Cremins was a teacher at the Swan School in Medford for over thirty-seven years. And also, be it resolved that the Medford School Committee expresses sincere condolences regarding the passing of George H.W. Bush, the forty-first President of the United States of America. All please rise on the passing of these two individuals. Thank you. Motion for suspension of the rules to take negotiations in legal matters in executive session. Is there a motion by Ms. Mustone that has come back before us? And a motion to go into executive session by Ms. Mustone, seconded by Mr. Gero. Roll call vote for executive session.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, seven in the affirmative, zero on the negative. We will enter executive session, and we will open up our executive session meeting in 207 to adjourn.